I'd like to call this meeting here in North City Council. The word, Officer Salo.
Mr. Buck?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Guthrie?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Here.
Mr. Rapp? Mr. Rolletta?
Here.
And Mr. Blake?
Here.
We have an in-person president this evening. If you'll please rise to the invitation by Mr. Johnson and follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Blessed be. Lord, we come to you humbly. Blessed are our deliberations. We are thankful for the bounty you provide. Be with the needy and be with the joyful. Be with our leaders in the city, in the state, and the nation, and guide them as they lead. And may we ever serve you, we pray in your name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to you, God, and the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. As the caucus council discusses any that may be on the agenda tonight that they might like to discuss, do we have anything, Mr. Marmee?
I'd like to see what's been said.
A motion by Mr. Marmee, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, sing the public prayer.
Aye.
One thing, son. We're after these streets, so let's come in here and then. Next, we have the minutes from our city council meeting from November 17th, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve of? A motion by Mr. Cost, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, sing the public prayer.
Aye.
One thing, son. We have two reports this evening of standing committees, one from finance and one from service. Those are what we received on file for objection. Also, a report from city officials. We have a report from our city tax administrator, the income tax question report ending November 15th, 2014. That will also be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have four. One from Paul Moran, along with Loomis. One from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Notice the legislative body on a procedure in which to file objections to a liquor agreement is that that may be necessary. Oh, I'm sorry, there's five. One from Roger Loomis, our utility superintendent, and then one from the Ohio EPA. File objections, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have comments from citizens. That's not necessarily a debate with council, but just a time that you could step up and have your opinion be heard. There are two sections for citizens' comments, one now and one after the legislation. Do we have anybody for this first section? Ma'am? Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, I'm Nancy Channel. I live at 1225 B Ivy Trail, North Ohio. Okay, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of us here tonight. This is something that's been on my mind for a long time, okay? And I've done a lot of research and I'm just telling the advocate guy. Most of the comments out here are from the advocate. So they're not lies, they're out of the advocate of different people.
Well, try not to hold that against you.
Are you?
Try not to hold that against you.
Okay, all right. So I hope that you will get lots of thoughts and consideration to what I'm going to speak on. I tell, I am speaking for the majority of people in Lincoln County. Why I say this is I do read the local paper, and I listen to the news, and I talk to a lot of people. Most of this information is the message has come from our local York advocate. Most people's concern is how are we going to pay our bills? And they end me with the cost of living, taxes, healthcare, utilities, food, and all of our expenses going up and our wages and income is stagnant. A few research surveys this year found 50% of Americans believe their income was trailing the cost of living. We have more people than ever on food stamps, disabilities, social programs that are not paying a lot of the taxes. So it puts some burdens on the ones who are paying. Now, let's talk about the taxes we pay. I would say everything we purchase has lots of taxes on it. We have our local taxes, schools, city, state, federal, property, and many more. Businesses are getting more taxes put on them with the healthcare and regulations that makes what we purchase more, and they cause a company to have to lay people off. Every layer of government wants to get into the citizen's wallet. We have a national debt of $15 trillion and over 100 trillion of unfunded liabilities of pensions, Medicare mandates, and much more. Figure it all out. We pay more than 50% of our income in taxes. Now, let's think about the projects that the lawmakers have on our local community. I know some of them are in debate, and some are the desires of our lawmakers. Bottom line, they are going to require more taxes from the Lincoln County residents. We had the exchange on Cherry Valley Road that has been talked about for a long time. We had the sewer project on the square with the new roundabouts and two-way traffic, projected to cost anywhere from $18 million to I think it was bids up to $23 million. And that our water and sewer bills will be having to pay for some of the cost. So I am sure this will be an increase in a water bill. I had read several letters to the editor and talked to many people that do not want the roundabouts and two-way traffic. We have to continually work for our roads and bridges that are deteriorating, facts that needs immediate repairs. The county engineer says he will need $10.9 million for the repair of roads and bridges for the next year. Forgot to put this in, but I would like to know where is all of the money through the years that we have designated and voted on for roads and bridges? Where is that money? Where is it gone? Why do we not have it here? Why are roads and bridges not being kept up to par? You know, I know some of that money is going for bike path repair, not roads and bridges. Although the bike path has roads and bridges. And then, oh yes, we are in the process of putting 30 new bike paths in Lincoln County. On the first two phases of the bike path, they said they need $511,560 and $750,000. Bike paths, bike paths are very expensive to maintain as they have roads and bridges and expenses, just like our roads and bridges. I believe that by building up to three more bike paths, you are creating an unfunded liability for the citizens of Lincoln County. A few years ago, when there was a levy on the ballot to maintain the bike paths, it was voted down several times. I think it's up to 10 or 11 times. I couldn't find that, so I didn't put how many. And then it was passed by the people that was working on the bike paths, went out and got people to vote on it. I think this is a people of Lincoln County say, we cannot afford the bike path, and I am right of the roads and bridges levy being voted down recently. What do you think they would say if they knew that you are planning on increasing and putting in more bike paths to increase our taxes? I know you are going to say, well, a lot of the funding is grant money. Well, grant money is still our money. It does not fall out of the sky. We have to repay it, or our grandkids will be repaying it. And where will they get that money with incomes dropping? Recently, the county commissioners voted a new conveyance tax of 1% on us so that when we sell a house, we have to pay $100 for every 100,000, when we sell our property. This will bring that tax up to 3%, because they already have 2% also. Also, there was a $5 increase on our license fees, and I believe that brings that up to $20. The scariest part of this is that there is no end in sight because no elected politician nor any unelected bureaucrat seems to care that in the world in which the taxpayers live, they are being asked to make impossible decisions on like whether to pay their mortgage, feed their children, or excel their homes because they can't afford the taxes. I've heard that several times. Every time you put a new tax on the taxpayer, you are taking money out of our pockets that needs to be used to feed our families, pay utilities and living expenses, and everything else we want to purchase. I am sure our founding fathers did not intend for our money to be spent like you want to spend it. They were for limited government. You ask taxpayers to take a cut every time you put a new tax on it. But it is now the time for our local governments to cut the budget and projects that are not necessary, such as the bike path. And in a recent article pertaining to a council meeting, council member Marmee said when we are asking our taxpayers to pay more, we should make sure we're very future with our money. Also, I couldn't find the quote, but I seen one also, Councilman Mark Guthrie said similar statement to that. Please listen to your fellow council members. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for this first section? Yes, ma'am.
I really wanted to go last, but since my prayer didn't work, I thought, hey, I better hurry up before my battery runs out. And the other reason is Nancy made some comments to the bike path, and I thought it'd be interesting to know that I have something in here as well. About the bike path, I've made some comments to that. Let's see. Try to get my, I'm sorry. My name is Anna Reel. I live at 1293 Grand Hill Road. I do better with the mouse than I do anything else. First of all, let me say that how much I appreciate that I have the opportunity to attend your meetings and allow me to voice my concerns or opinions of things. I want to stress that I am in no way interested in running for office. I've been asked that by people because they see me at these meetings. I retired over four years ago, and although I'm enjoying retirement, it is not at all what I have imagined it to be. I never took an interest in politics. I've always known the issues and levies as well as what the candidates stood for, so I could make an informed decision while going to the polls. As time went on, I became very concerned about our country and didn't understand the decision our elected officials were making. Working in management 50, 60 hours per week, taking care of my mother who was very ill, and having a home and family taken care of, I did nothing but pray. After retirement, I met many people with the same concerns, so I decided to start going to meetings and began working with concerned citizens, something I thought I would never do. I attended many meetings in Lincoln County, including but not limited to city council, commissioners, planning committee, LCATs growing Lincoln County, just to name a few. Also been to the State House several times, and yes, Tea Party meetings. The Tea Party stands for Tax Enough Already. American citizens, Republicans and Democrats, who are fed up with both parties, as most Americans are. They are trying to preserve and protect our Constitution, liberty, freedom, property rights, religious rights, everything that this great nation was founded on, for everyone. Yet the government and news media are referring to them as source of the problems of our country, and going as far as to say they are terrorists just for voicing their opinion or having concerns. When did good become bad and bad become good? Everything that was good in our nation years ago is now being attacked. Family values, prayers in our public schools, churches, freedom of speech, pro-life, integrity, ethical values. Now children are having children by multiple fathers. It's not politically correct to use God's name. It's okay to have an abortion, but saving a life of an animal is extremely important. I love animals, and I've rescued so many animals in the past, so I have nothing against But finally, and really, when pregnancy can be prevented multiple ways nowadays, why do thousands of babies being killed? Obviously, there is no morals. Just do as you wish, and taxpayers will pay for the consequences. Also, careful what you say, because it is not politically correct to say God bless or Merry Christmas. We don't want to offend anyone. Whatever happened to the nonbelievers just walking away or not responding to something they didn't like? Nonbelievers are not required to attend church or celebrate Christmas. What if the tables were turned around and believers started protesting and forcing nonbelievers to go to church? To tell you the truth, this group of people trying to tell me and everyone else how to live are offending me. Have you noticed that police officers can't do their jobs? If they obey the law and take action against the criminal, their reputation and likelihood is in jeopardy. Recent example, Ferguson, Missouri. Where was Al Sharpton and Jesse Jackson when two young black men, both 14 and 17 years old, shot and killed an 18-month-old baby because their mother didn't have a purse on her or any money on her? And this was happened in Atlanta about a year ago. Why is this country so divided? Whites, blacks, Democrats, Republicans? What is really driving this trend, and what is the true agenda behind the scenes? I dare to you, there is a purpose of all this hatred and violence that's going on in our nation. We were born as Americans first, not Democrats, not Republicans, Tea Party, or Libertarians. However, the two-party system works because it helps balance the interests of all people. If the people aren't pleased with our elected officials, then the elections allows to voice our opinions. But today, America is under attack, and it is slowly changing by the progressive movement in Washington. We now have more corruption, voter fraud, officials saying one thing but doing another. This should be alarming to all of us, whether you are an elected official or a citizen. Stop and think, little by little, how slowly things are changing and what has been happening in the last 20 years and more since 2009. No federal budget, open borders, illegal immigrants, and illegal immigrants having access to benefits they never worked for, while our own citizens are becoming homeless. Let us not forget jobs going overseas, unemployment, forced healthcare, decline in our education systems, IRS scandals, facet purists, Benghazi, the attack on military and their families, and Obama releasing terrorists, and now amnesty for millions of the illegal immigrants. How about the loudness of this president while our Congress does nothing? Isn't this alarming to you? Again, I've attended meetings in the last four years. I believe our local elected officials are good people and working hard to do the right thing in both parties. However, I have some concerns of how decisions are made and what I have witnessed. First, several of us attended a commissioner's meeting over a year ago. A citizen got up to mention that she had attempted to meet with them, but to no avail. It was apparent that the commissioners had no intentions in meeting with her. We stated that we had concerns about the Newark Dissecting Federal Grants, but was assured by commissioners that Newark does not deal in grants. Several months later, we attended the LCAT's open house. I spoke to Jerry Newton and someone from the TJ Evans Foundation and asked how, I'm sorry, I got my contacts on him, things are blurred. They looked and asked how much of the bike trails was being funded by the federal grants. They looked at me and made it clear there were no grants involved, as it was funded by private donations and the foundation. Other citizens who attended also had concerns of what they learned or did not learn. We decided to research our concerns and present our findings to the next LCAT's meeting. I will report on what I discovered and report it on. After reading and reviewing 17 articles about the Grand Hill Peak and Tessa North bike paths, it revealed that the estimated total cost of bike paths was over $6,400,000. Grants were received was over $4,400,000. Cost to the cities was $1.4 million. TJ Evans Foundation, $160,000. I asked LCATs, why was I told no grants were used when it's simply not true? I got no response. Also, I asked why the foundation gets all the credit when taxpayer dollars are being used for these bike trails. Second, I attended a council meeting, not here in Newark, I want to make that very clear. Where the councilmen wanted to table a grant that they had not read, they were encouraged by a planning director to sign it that evening or lose the money. Only one councilman spoke up against that decision. Two voted no, while the others voted and approved. How can they run their households this way? How can we trust them if they allow pressure to force them into making a blindsided decision? Along with grants comes stipulations and conditions, and it allows the federal government to have more control over our communities. One good example of this Common Core. Do you have any idea how Common Core was embedded into our local schools and what the real role of Common Core is? If not, you should. The real truth about the Obama healthcare law is now starting to surface, and so will Common Core in a couple quarters. Do you trust the federal government with our children's future, or are you the best one to decide what to teach them? There are three quotes and predictions that I'd like to just say and kind of give you, and how do you think about what this says? "The American people will never knowingly adopt socialism, but under the name of liberalism, they will adopt every fragment of the socialist program until one day, America will be a socialist nation without knowing what happened." Norman Thomas, he was a presidential candidate in 40, 44, and 48. The second quote. "We cannot expect Americans to jump from capitalism to communism, but we can assist their elected leaders in giving Americans small doses of socialism, and they suddenly will wait to find they have communism." Prushok, 1959. "When an opponent declares, 'I will not come over to your side,' I calmly say, 'Your child belongs to us already. What are you? You will pass on, your descendants, however. Now stand in the same camp. In a short time, they will know nothing else but this new community.'" Adolf Hitler. Do you think this is impossible? Think again and reflect on what's going on in today's world, in America. Remember Hillary Clinton, "It takes a village to raise a child"? Do you agree? Or do our children belong to the government? Or do you feel that the parent's responsible to raise their children and become responsible adults? What Obama says, transforming America, do you really understand the meaning? When Obama says America needs to share the wealth, do you think of the extreme elite who will be taxed higher? Or is it the middle class, the wealthy? At a convention I attended this fall, a report showed most Democrats and Republicans have the same concern in what is transforming in America, and all believe in our Constitution and the American dream. Again, let me say, I truly believe we have local elected officials who want to do the good. But if our local politicians are too busy to research, understand how their decision today will affect our future, allow time to meet with concerned citizens, and listen with an open heart, then to whom can we turn? We need to start with our own community if we ever have a chance to save our country. So I implore you to take your Republican and Democrat hat off. We are all Americans first, and we need to come and work together for the future of our generation. I will be leaving Newark for a few months, so I wanted to share my concerns and let you know why I attended these meetings and asking so many questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for this first section?
Okay.
We're in 14-38 by Mrs. Floyd and Mr. Cost, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and physician authorization tables of the Department of Public Service, Division of Street Maintenance and Traffic Control by combining the two departments and creating one additional crew leader, senior, one sign fabricator, in-pound clerk, one assistant street traffic superintendent, and abolish one clerk typist sign fabricator, one traffic control operations manager, and one street maintenance operations manager.
I did want to add, before we talk about this, Mrs. Floyd and I did, as the Personal Committee Act, the committee between the union and the administration the other day, so we did do that, so. You've heard the second reading of 14-38. What does you wish?
Mr. President, I made a motion to be accept, ordinance 14-38.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Is there any discussion on 14-38?
I just want to, I'm sorry, I just want to say, I think, I know there's still some concerns, but I do think it will make those two departments, those combined, a much more efficient organization for the city of Newark. I think that's important. Thank you.
Mrs. Floyd, anyone else? Mr. Captain?
Mr. President, I considered offering amendment on this, but I'm not going to do so. I, first, let me thank Mr. Busker, I talked to him for a minute here before the meeting. I wanted to make sure that the administration is comfortable with this pay range for this sign fabricator position that is taking on the new duties and new dynamics. And it sounds like they are comfortable with the pay range as it is. I am going to vote for this. I mean, I, gosh, I think going back to when I was first elected council president, I raised the issue of merging streets and traffic, and it was not very popular to do at the time. But I've always felt that it makes sense, and I do think it will produce some efficiencies. I think that, you know, I'm pleased that this legislation is going to result in eliminating a pre-bought paid management position, and it's also going to give a worker a chance to step up into a senior crew leader position. I do believe that there still are legitimate concerns about the job restrictions. And, you know, I don't know how, you know, it's really not an issue that council can resolve. I, you know, I fear that it's going to be a costly experience for the city, but I think that we could have grievances, it'd be an arbitration over these issues, but, you know, I think the process needs to play itself out. The only other thing I did want to say, because, you know, I mentioned I almost offered an amendment, to be frank with you, I almost offered an amendment to raise that position to a 32. But the reason that I'm not going to do it is the administration has, I think, been comfortable with it, and I don't think that, I don't sense that that would be the case. But the one thing that has bothered me all day, I've just worried about this all day long, about whether or not, because pretty much everybody in this room knows that the likely person that's going to go in that position is the current sign fabricator who happens to be the union president. Now, I hope that this is not a situation where the union president, because, you know, I'm well ahead of myself. I have said for years, the lousiest job on the face of the earth to me would be being the union president, because everybody in the management team cannot care a whole lot for a union president, because it's just natural that we be adversarial, because they have to represent the interest of their entire union. So I just hope that, you know, we're doing the right thing by categorizing this as a 30, and we may well be, but I just hope that we're being fair in this situation to this individual. So, but I'll be voting in for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Captain. Anyone else? Mr. Raffron, first piece of legislation, 14-38.
Mr. Cost? Am I mistaken? I thought pay range, I thought it was a 31.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
I wanted to make sure that was clarified. Thank you.
Anyone else? Autobots, call the roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Rolletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
14-38 has passed 10-0. Next, we have one that's on the first reading, 14-39.
Ordinance 14-39 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and Mrs. Floyd, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 2023 Cherry Valley Road, City of Newark, Lincoln County, Ohio, from that of NFC, multi-family condo zoning district, to NFR, multi-family resident zoning district.
14-39 will be referred to the plan commission. Next, we have resolution from the second reading, 14-9.
Resolution 14-90 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, and resolution appropriating and disappropriating monies for current expenses of municipal corporations.
Heard the second reading of 14-9. What does you wish for the presidency, Mr. Buck?
Luke Bush, 14-90.
Motion by Mr. Blake, seconded by Mrs. Floyd. If any discussion on 14-9. See none, autobots, call the roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fourteen dash ninety passes ten zero. Next, we have fourteen dash ninety-one.
Resolution fourteen dash ninety-one by Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Blake, a resolution approving and ratifying an updated solid waste management plan.
You've heard the second reading of fourteen dash ninety-one. What does your wish?
Mr. Buss, or Mr. Cos, or to make a motion to adopt fourteen ninety-one?
Motion to adopt by Mr. Cos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Beau. Is there any discussion on fourteen dash ninety-one? See none, autumns, please call the world vote.
Mr. Buss?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fourteen dash ninety-one passes ten zero. Next, we have resolutions on the first reading, fourteen dash ninety-two.
Resolution fourteen dash ninety-two by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fourteen dash ninety-two will be held for two weeks till the next council meeting. Next, we have fourteen dash ninety-three.
Resolution fourteen dash ninety-three by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day review rule.
Second. Move away the two-day review rule by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. You're receiving, Mr. Floyd?
It's a payoff to some of the authorities.
Mr. Blake, autumns, please call the world, move away the two-day review rule.
Mr. Buss?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day review rule is then waived on fourteen dash ninety-three. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt fourteen nine three.
Motion by Mr. Blake, second by Mrs. Floyd. Any other discussion on fourteen dash ninety-three? See none, autumns, please call the world vote.
Mr. Buss?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Ralletta?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Fourteen dash ninety-three passes ten zero. And finally this evening, we have fourteen dash ninety-four.
Resolution fourteen dash ninety-four by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mrs. Floyd, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to advertise for bids and enter into contract for certain essential supplies for various departments of the city of Newark, Ohio, for two thousand and fifteen.
Fourteen dash ninety-four will be held for two weeks till the next council meeting. And that concludes our legislation for this evening. Thank you for your attention. Next, on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Do we have anyone who'd like to comment?
I got it. I got it. Thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about Dave. Cam Waldman and Sixty Cent Altenji. I'm a woman, I know I'll be talking about what she said, the bike trails and stuff like that. I could tell you stuff about the bike trail that you would shock, that you can't find out. Because I used to look on them. I worked for the county for six years. I, oh, I'm sorry, I worked for the county for six years. I maintained them, I took care of them, I designed them, I had meetings with other things for six years, and I know how they fund them. And like she said, a hundred thousand dollars, if you know where that money comes from, some of these bike trails, you'd be shocked. It's not the people you think it is that are paying for it. And to me, one time, I'm going to tell you, one time when I first got a job, I was one hundred and ten bike trails. I was, I was working. But then I got to find out how much money is coming out of my own pocket for what somebody else, an organization, was saying, "Oh, I fund this, I fund this. I paid for this new bridge down over sixteen. I paid for the bike trail on sixteen. I paid for the Cheddy Road, Cheddy Road stuff." Then I thought, wait a minute. No, you don't. He didn't pay for that stuff. The most you have ever put into a bike trail is a hundred thousand dollars, and that put a hand over the sixteen bridge. But you got an idea, pop on his, on science, that he did it. That bike trail was paid for a long sixteen, and now it was paid for, I was at a meeting, they paid for it. Was paid for leftover highway gasoline tax money. Four million dollars went to that bike trail. Four million dollars came back to this county back then to fix all those. And it's still putting money in. Same way for museums in the city. I stood right here, back in that corner back there, where everybody else, and this guy wasn't here, most anyone, one person was here. I thought this guy, I thought guys here with two hundred dollars shoes. Well, he sat right there and said, "Well, you donate me three hundred thousand dollars, the county gave me three hundred thousand dollars, the state will kick in three hundred thousand dollars, and I'll guarantee you, three hundred thousand people will go to that museum down there every year for next ten years." Paid people. How many people go to that museum?
A lot, I think.
Not much. Last year, what, ninety-six thousand? Ninety-six thousand people. It lasted five years. And most of those weren't paid. Those are what I call captured people, that's high school kids and elementary kids and stuff, that have to go to it because a teacher wants to go to it. These, or people out there is mad, out there's runabouts. I come in there, what, four meetings? I miss the true they had down there, the only true they had down there. The one was in the hospital, one was, I was sick. But you guys don't listen when I said, nobody wanted them. That's the reason why that, and the highway tax money, the license plate tax money, you didn't get that levy pass last time. Just think, I talked around about four hundred, four hundred and fifty people. She said she talked around about three hundred people. Each one of them had people, a husband, wife, or friend. Just think, if you were to listen to the people, you might have got that levy pass for the state last week, last month. Just think, listen to the people. And don't spend on bike trails, don't spend on runabouts, don't spend on stupid things, and don't give people rich Gilberts tax breaks for buildings that nobody wanted. You know, "Oh, yeah, he gonna come in for twenty-six or apartment debt," but how much taxes are we losing because of that? Look it up. I did. Look it up, how many year on the square? How many good people on the square get tax breaks? Because they say, "Oh, we gonna fix it up." Thirty-five years ago, forty years ago, they come in and said, "We gonna do this, we gonna do that, we gonna do this, we gonna fix all this up. Give me a tax break." There are some people out there that are still getting tax breaks, but they, they have sold twice. I don't know how they do it. They have sold their properties twice, but the property still getting tax breaks. Thirty-five years ago, I was sitting here, waiting for tax breaks. Out there on River Road, well, off of River Road, there's seventy-five acres out there that's still getting tax breaks because of a, what was it, a gas fee when we find me? It's now still, or Farman, still tax break. Take this, how much my head was wanting for the roads. Guys, you have to start listening to the people. We don't come up here, week after week and week and stuff, and tell you what the people saying. Yeah, just me? You guys think I'm some crazy guy out there talking to people out there? Yeah, I am. But the people out there tell me, they come here for the last thirty-five years to tell you guys what going on. Now, we got other people coming up here for the couple, what, five years, ten years, what people talk. We talk to the people, not to the rich Gilberts, or a few couple hundred people that, you know, little square people around the square and stuff. We talk to taxpayers, not the people that are getting tax breaks and not paying the fairer fare of taxes. You know, there are people in there that get tax break that doesn't even live in the city, you know? They don't even live in the county. But you guys are getting tax breaks because they come in and say, "Oh, we gonna fix up this, we gonna fix up that. We gonna put runabouts in." But no, you guys won't listen. You listen to the rich Gilberts. But that's because now the Supreme Court gave a board that didn't give money, give people money. But, you know, I love something, I haven't talked about something for the last few years. I love the way you guys take a concentration bill, White's got out here. For every week, I just come in and listen, read that. The benefit, put it beyond the wall, but then you guys got illegal piece of rock guy on the square. Maybe the people from Wyoming took care of it for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldman. Yes, ma'am.
I know I talked a lot, but... And a real twelve ninety-three grand girl, Ruth, I just want to comment on this gentleman. Just on the point I'm trying to bring up, that, you know, we all should be concerned of what's really and truly going on. And I know I talked a lot earlier, so I'm going to keep this brief, but let's talk about these bike trails. There was just something recently within the last couple, three weeks, on one of the news media shows about the roads and bridges. It's not just in Lakin County, you know that, it's not the state of Ohio. This is nationwide. So why is our roads and bridges all over the country deteriorating? But yet, the federal government encourages us to spend all of this money and gives us grants to build bike paths. I have an idea why, because I've done some research that I'm not going to talk about right now. But these are the things that our elected officials need to clear up. I know you're all busy, and I know you're doing the best you can, but it's your responsibilities to really understand of what is going on. And believe me, ten years from now, you won't understand what these bike trails are all for. It's not to bring people into the communities. Your schools, your roads, your bridges, unless crime, that brings people into your communities. Bike paths, why do we need all this extended? And like I said, I was told no grants will ever use, but TJ Evans and private donations are for these bike paths. And guess what? Hundred and sixty thousand dollars was private money for a, what, six million, four hundred thousand? That's a very little, and that's just like this gentleman said. Why does someone get all of this glory? What is it paying for? It's things to be concerned about. And I, as a citizen, the more I'm digging in, the more I'm learning, I am scared, not just for this country, but for our community, because it's affecting our whole American. That's why I'm asking you to put your American hats on and forget your Republican, forget your white, forget your black, and forget, and work for this country. Because if we can't, as citizens, come to our officials, how do we expect to use that up motion and get to the state and get to our federal? Because if you don't understand what's truly happening and why all this money that you are getting for grants is going to bike paths rather than roads and bridges, you're going to be shocked in about ten, fifteen years from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew. I have no other administration to see you.
Good evening, Mr. President. On behalf of Mayor Hall and the grateful city, I just want to publicly thank our safety forces. November fifth was a difficult day. Mayor was having a team meeting, and we heard the words that nobody wants to hear, an officer had been shot. And the good news is both those officers are back on duty. As soon as the scene was secured, Mayor and I went down and couldn't be more proud that certainly our friends in the fire, how they responded, provided safety in that community. And again, just want to take an opportunity to thank them publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Anyone else from the administration? Under this ladies tonight are award-winning auditor, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Autumns, I'll pass, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our law director, Mr. Sassen.
Mr. President, I will pass as well.
Mr. Sassen.
Mayor Hall. Yes, I just want to extend a condolences to the family of David Calhoun. David was a past community development director with the city of Newark under Mayor Bruce Bay, and he just recently passed, and I don't get a pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Buss?
Pass, thank you.
Mr. Cos?
I just need to call for a service committee. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Mrs. Floyd?
I just want to mention several things going on downtown. Obviously, the courthouse lighting happened this Friday, and I should have mentioned a couple weeks ago, if you've not seen the Nutcracker locally, which was done over the weekend four different times, it is a beautiful presentation. It's hard to believe it's a local presentation. It's been done every year for the last, I think, ten years. So if you have the opportunity next year to go, please do so. In the next few days, on Thursday night, there's, what, something downtown called sights and sounds. It's a tour of seven downtown churches, and you start at Second Presbyterian Church, and you go through all the churches and end up at St. Francis. And it's, it's a beautiful thing to do. I've done it. I usually work at my own church, and you stop at the church, there's music at each place, and there are, you have a chance to see the churches decorated. On Friday, there's the cookie walk downtown. Buy a ticket for fifteen dollars and go to, I think it's twenty-two different places where you pick up cookies. I picked up cooking cookies for my church tomorrow, and baking cookies for the Midland later in the week, so. And on Friday night, if you have little kids or grandkids, Polar Express is at the Midland, and it's one of my favorite things to see. Little kids come in their pajamas, they have a conductor who clicks their ticket if you're familiar with the movie. They go in, oh, they get a little bell like it's in the movie, they go in and watch the movie on the big screen, Santa and Mrs. Santa and the tree up there, it's a, it's a really neat thing. Next Sunday, it's Newark Granville Symphony Orchestra at the Midland, and they play the first half of concert, and then the Newark High School choir and Granville High School choir come and stand behind the orchestra and do some Christmas songs. It's absolutely gorgeous. And the music is wonderful, and I mean, sometimes you're not aware all these things are going on in Newark. On Saturday, December thirteenth, the State Farm, I don't know what they call it, Family Day, is going to be in downtown Newark, and State Farm employees and their families come downtown and go to different venues, the Midland showing, I think, Happy Feet, and there are places for them to eat, places where kids can do things, and all the stores have, you know, special deals for the State Farm family. And I just want you to be aware, there's a lot going on downtown. There's a lot of talk that is saying there's not much going on downtown, but things are, you know, there's just a lot going on this next couple weeks, so be aware of that. And with that, I have to...
Thank you, Mrs. Ford. Mr. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad that the mayor mentioned David Calhoun. Dave also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think he also did a stint as a service director for a period of time. And I went to school with Dave in Heath, and he was a fine fellow, and I was really shocked when I saw his obituaries. I wanted to mention a few things if I could. One, just a gentleman, an Afro-American gentleman I met, just happened to run into him, and he gone, had a cup of coffee, named Mark Matthews, World War II veteran, lives here right in our community, just a quality fellow, and he had, he served in excellent career, right at the end, right before World War II was declared over. But he's one of those seniors that you could just sit and listen to all day, and I just wanted to mention the fact that I had the opportunity to cross paths with that great man. I, something that, well, I want to also chime in and care about your point regarding the square and the activity around the square. Last time I went down, I just sat on the square, listened to the chimes, walked around, and it was just really neat to see the families that were down there, just walking around the square. It's so beautiful, man, and it's a wonderful thing, and I hope everybody gets a chance to do that with their families. I wanted to mention an issue that I brought up several weeks ago regarding the workers' comp refund. It's my understanding that a general fund refund was a little over two hundred thousand dollars. I suggested at the time I brought this up that we should try to figure out a way to add at least one police officer and one firefighter. I still feel that way. I hope that as you, as the finance committee looks to the budget next week, that some citizens... consideration is given for using that at the time. There was some concern expressed about that being a one-time refund, but there was an article actually in the paper just on the twenty-ninth of October indicating that that reduction is going to continue, so we're going to have another two hundred thousand dollar plus next year. I'd like to see those funds here, Mark, to add at least one more police officer and one more firefighter in our city. Sometimes when I think about the fact that a two thousand law, we passed a safety budget, half percent income tax, and, you know, it was sold on more manpower, both police and fire manpower, and basically today, we're at or below in both divisions where we were in East California. And that was council approving EMS bill, which has brought another major million and half dollars of revenue into the city, and yet completely flat on personnel. And so, you know, I just, I'm very hopeful that the Finance Committee and the city administration will look closely at that, because I think we need to start getting our numbers up and make the, you know, the safety of our citizens a number one priority.
Thank you. Mr. Guthrie, Miss Hall? Mr. Johnson?
Well, the courthouse lighting is absolutely gorgeous, and it was a wonderful evening when they did the lighting, and I think we should be very proud of what is done, and the carillon is absolutely stunning.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of comments. I too can agree with a number of the things that were discussed this evening, some of which, you know, doesn't impact or my role here as a council member is not weighed into the decision-making process of some of the things that were discussed, but those that are impacted by our decisions here, some things that we should always look at, the comment about, you know, why, why do we offer grants for certain things but not for paving? Well, in our city, we do have something called CDBG funds in which we could utilize, and we do utilize some funds that are grant funds towards paving. However, there are some of those funds that we do not use towards paving, and I, to a degree, if one of the priorities in the city is paving, then that should be also somewhere that we look for dollars, additional dollars to put towards paving. I wouldn't say that I fear for things, but can we make improvements? Yes. And I think it's, we need to make strides towards that. I don't think that, you know, I don't think that pointing fingers or that, that's probably the wrong terminology, but say in a council or commissioners or whatever legislative body, there are just things that are broken within our government that need to be fixed. And I still believe in the two-party system or the multi-party system, and believe that it is the right thing to do. I just think that sometimes it just goes a little bit awry, and I think that it's, hopefully it'll come back and be corrected, but it just takes individuals and not just, you know, that can do things that'll make those changes and differences. And I think that's what hopefully this council is doing, whether it be the small dollars, the grant funds that we can utilize somewhere else, whether it be the decisions that we make towards budget, as far as what can we look at as far as financial increases, whether it be staffing. We look at, we look at what we budget and what we determine is appropriate as far as a percentage of the budget towards certain things such as payroll. And, you know, you just have to look at, here's the payroll, here's what it is, and we need to work within that payroll to make sure that the staffing level is appropriate to the payroll. But when we don't have the money in, you know, a larger force, just going towards that payroll, then it's difficult. And we would all like to see additional firefighters, additional police officers, additional people working on our streets, additional people making sure that the grass is cut in the areas in which the city needs to maintain. So, but unfortunately, our funds don't allow us to have that kind of staffing, so hopefully we'll be able to make those changes or efficiencies to kind of overcome that, and without a penalty.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Ratt?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for my tardiness. Secondly, I guess I'll remind everybody that today is the opening of deer gun season, so wish everybody a lot of good luck, and be careful. That was not my reason for being late. And until Saturday night, I'll refrain from saying you go Bucks, and we'll get all that.
Mr. Ratt, Mr. Ralletta?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
And Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to announce and remind folks that on December eleventh, the South End will be receiving a special visitor from the North Pole. We have our annual Christmas party that will be happening with the South North Civic Association. It's going to be December eleventh at six P.M. at Ben Franklin School. D K and her staff are working with us to use their cafeteria space. Last year, we had about a hundred and fifty people at the Buckingham House Inn, so we needed a larger space to accommodate the number of folks that were coming through the door, so. But Santa will be there December eleventh. Seraphina's Tea and Coffee Works will be providing a cookie station for kids and families, and Park National Bank is working with us with some volunteers, some adurers, and things of that nature, so if the folks want to come, like, it's more than welcome. It's not just the South End community, it's something to everybody. We see it as sort of a thank you party at the end of the year for different partnerships and collaborations that we've had throughout the whole year, and we're really looking forward to that. Again, that's December eleventh at six o'clock at Ben Franklin School. This Friday, I'm actually looking forward to, I don't know how many people say this publicly, but I'm looking forward to spending some time with Mark Mauder. We're going to go to a development conference at the Ohio State University on Friday, so I'm looking forward to learning about economic development, development issues, and how some partnerships, collaborations work there, so I'll be at that partner ride Friday morning with Big Riding Kid, so. And then I do want to call in, I've already sent out an announcement, but December eighth and December ninth, we'll call in for a Finance Committee meeting with anticipation of receiving the mayor's budget. December eighth will be at five thirty, the normal time, and then December ninth will be Act of the Thank Commission, which is expected to be six thirty. I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. You're right, I don't think I've heard anybody say it about Mr. Mauder, except maybe Blake.
I didn't go that far.
Just a few housekeeping things. Again, our next committee meeting will be December eighth at five thirty here in this room. Our next council meeting will be two weeks from tonight, December fifteenth, here at seven P.M. Since it's a five Monday month, there is no meeting on the twenty-second, and our last committee meeting of the year will be December twenty-ninth. Once again, thank you for coming, we appreciate it, we appreciate your input, thank you for paying attention. So, motion is here. Motion by Mr. Cost, motion by Mr. Ratt.